... Right now, now it's going to be a little bit of a... Very loud.
Hey, no, because something's going on. Fireworks. They don't want to be on the floor. It's like, right, like, oh. I don't know if you've been around this before. The body is... Ever? You can't do that. Very thoughtful. Oh. I knew you were... How's it going?
Doing something like that, I doubt this would work for me.
Everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's up, maybe it's up. It's not a problem. They were starting to talk. They were starting to talk. Yeah. They just need to show... They're really questioning each other. They're... They're going to... They're not all over here. No, that's what you're talking about. You gotta go from... You actually do it. Yeah. That was the ocean. We live zoneers, but we are the current. We first stop with the usual, we're practically active. Do this up. Slap you over the hill. And really... Well, it's a black in the back. We have a problem. Arguably, every time we're standing in the box. But the other side, like you're expecting, no. To... So, 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 so... That must be... So, sure. Generally, this stuff seems to be going down some potential. Well... It's a good one. Very good. He will never... He'll try something. He'll experiment. Like God, for example. You know, like, you know, you're... You're all seen right now. I'll step back a few. Try it. Everyone just step back and say, let's support their... Well, do it. Just come out. That's the problem. Because it's... She's there. The following... Everybody. What we do is... I mean, yeah, sometimes it's... Take anything that won't hit out. No, they were gonna write all those things up and put it in Friday, weren't they? Sure. Yeah. And when... Well, we've... We said we'd do it, but it's like he's kind of ready to try to just happen to, uh, do this on... Why, why doesn't he give it to me? I always see him. For the... Falls and... We really have to wear any time he's doing it. For the same reason. Behind our plan, your problem, other words. And then we... And then we... We got a really good... But then they further the last... You know? If, if theirs are... Of course, China. You guys don't... Don't, I wouldn't do any other... Don't do anything else than they are. They're like... It's gotta go to business. I'm gonna get this... Sound good. All right. Brown. New truck. You know, they're typically like people that... They step by the glass. Yes. That's... You should be up there. You should be up there right now. And that's what you... Every time. So, they very... Any chance... You can't beat them. People. We were supposed to leave. You wanna pull that back a little? Right there. Right there. There's...
No, well, he, no, actually, he was going to try to... It's like... Oh.
And, and you knew this was your choice, too? Thank you, man. Oh, my goodness. Which is... Another... Hey. I just talked to Bob, and he says he's already moved it out for, uh, I think he's got the ready. This situation. Mercy's old truck. Mommy down now. She's got, she has the... Good. I would just tell her, oh, she's... She's looking back at that step. She's getting closer to him. I think it's... Little... I don't assume... It's... Let me know. Why are you guys printing away?
So adorable.
Hey, so, you take that dog home? I called her.
So pretty.
Hi, wait, okay. I'll be right back. Long hair.
Eight, nine. Uh, the... Who you're doing? Just a... Stay late to help. It's a little doggy. Start, Doug. Morning, are you? Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
Good morning. Hello, sir.
How are you doing today, sir?
Oh, you're good.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting of April fifteenth. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Carol. Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valadez.
Present.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present.
Please rise for the invocation to be offered by Monsignor Thomas Cal... Callahan. Cal, yeah. I, I missed the one syllable there. Our Mother of Sorrow's Catholic Church with a pledge of allegiance to be given by Supervisor Miller.
Good morning, we all. And it's in honor to pray with you and for you. And these are Passover days, this Jewish Passover feast. And Christian Passover feast, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, we come to pray in a most sacred time. The prayer of the psalmist reminds us, unless the Lord builds the city, their labor in vain will build it. Lord of all creation, and of Passover days, and of the biblical word, come to be with our leaders and all who serve in building the diverse community of Pima County. In these challenging times, inspire them with the courage to serve the least and the most vulnerable among us. Give us the collective wisdom to share limited resources equitably, justly, and fairly, always putting people first. Give us sacrificial spirits, servant, and compassionate hearts to serve the common good. Follow the gift of your sacrificial love on those whose lives are impacted by decreased resources. Help all of us to be rich in your love, so that we may act justly, walk humbly before you, before your all-embracing and ever-present presence. Amen.
The United States of America, in two thirty of it, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Monsignor, the very Reverend Monsignor Tom Cottley, for being here this morning for our Mother of Sorrow Catholic Church, our cold and twenty-ninth street. It's an honor to have you here, sir, longtime servant of our diocese, and we appreciate the Passover reminder. All of...
Hi, Joe. I'd remind everybody, too, that back when Monsignor Cottley first came into Tucson, I was in the altar boys over here. Cathedral. We used to serve mass with Monsignor all the time.
Go along with it.
Yes, we do.
Thank you all.
I'm very proud of that.
Nice to see you. Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I would ask for a moment of personal privilege.
Proceed.
Um, first thing I wanted to mention is that we do have cameras here in the room. They're being operated not by Pima County employees, but by political staff members of one of the board members here. And that's fine, that's great, they're allowed and certainly welcome. But I would caution people that they remain on during the breaks. So, if you don't want your private conversations to end up on YouTube like they have in the past, please stay away from those cameras and try not to talk too loud if you don't want your private conversations, like I said, spread around for the world to see. Second item that I wanted to mention as well is that it is Holy Week, and District Five is the home to a number of Pasquayaki neighborhoods, including Old Pasqua and New Pasqua, as well as the place over on Forty-Fourth Street, which is in the Sunset Villa neighborhood. And they will be conducting their Easter ceremonies this week. And so, please, if you have the chance, go out there and enjoy those ceremonies. They have been conducted since time immemorial, wherever Yaki people live. And it's really quite an amazing set of ceremonies that you see right in the most urban circumstances. Really, truly beautiful and interesting. There is a place on the Yaki website, the Pasquayaki website, where you can take a look at a page that has all the estimated times for the beginning of those ceremonies throughout Holy Week, accumulating with the Gloria, which is offered on Saturday morning. But please come out, it's very interesting. It's, you can say you're a real two-stoner, once you've been to the Yaki ceremonies at Easter.
Thank, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that report. Supervisor Elias, I have to bring back Monsignor Cottley, who reminded us that last night was the first night of Passover, many had their first night seder. Tonight, second night seder is sometimes celebrated in many parts of our community. But tonight, we do have a reminder today that there's a man in a Cuban prison called Alan Gross, and he was on a hunger strike up until yesterday. We, we hope that he has celebrated seder, was able to, even though he spends twenty-three hours a day with two other prisoners in a cramped, small cell. He's lost a hundred and ten pounds since first being arrested. He's lost ten pounds on his hunger strike. His mother prayed and asked him to stop the hunger strike for the Passover, which he asked. I just hope that, I pray that people keep him in their prayers this Easter season and this Passover. Thank you very much.
And in the ecumenical spirit, I want to thank Supervisor Elias for mentioning the Pasquayaki Easter ceremonies. And then also let folks know if they'd like to participate in a seder. There are a number of opportunities this week. And I think if you go online, the Arizona Daily Star has listed those opportunities. There's one, and I, I, I'm sorry, I've forgotten exactly when. I'm thinking maybe it's Wednesday night, but especially for children, that I, I think will be, would be a very interesting one. With that, we have, we are now on item five of four, Paws for Paws. And we have with us Chi-Chi, Zichi, and Officer Boney. And Chi-Chi is a Chihuahua long-haired miss. And she's spayed.
Good morning. This is Zichi. Although I feel like Chi-Chi better. It sounds cuter. She's, she's a sweet little dog. She hasn't been with us that long. I usually bring the longer-term dogs, but she does have special needs. Apparently, she has epilepsy. She had a massive seizure about two weeks ago. So, she's gonna need some additional care, um, other than just normal dog care. I'm not sure what the medication that'll be required, what that will be. And it's not confirmed that she has epilepsy. She just did have the one seizure while she was in our care. But it was a pretty massive seizure. It doesn't disqualify her for adoption, though. She's still quite a loving little sweet dog, as you can see. Very, very cute. Full of energy and just wants to go, go, go. She's looking for, you know, just the right home where somebody's got the time, patience, and the willingness to take on her extra needs. Because she's special needs, there's no adoption fee, it's been waived. So, it's just the fifteen-dollar licensing fee for her. Other dogs right now are presently thirty dollars, unless they've been with us for longer than two weeks or have special needs of their own. She's brought in as a stray. No one claimed her. So, she's just waiting to go home with the next person to come by and, and take a look and take interest in her. Also, last week's dog, Red, is still waiting. So, if you're looking for a larger dog, he's still waiting for a home. And plenty of others, if, if neither one of them is available for what you're looking for. Hundreds and hundreds of dogs and cats are waiting for adoption right now. So, if you've got the room in, in your home and in your heart, please come down, table to feed our animals. We're open from twelve to seven on weekdays, ten to seven on weekends. Also, I wanted to mention, please, if, if you have pets, anxious, spayed, neutered. This is the time of year where we have enormous, enormous amounts of kittens and puppies coming in. And, you know, there's only so many homes out there that are able to take pets. So, please be responsible with your pets and, and let's keep the population down. It's a manageable size for our community, for, in the best interest of the animals, and of ourselves. Thank you for your time, and please come on down to see Zichi, or Red, or any of the other, except hundreds and hundreds of animals down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Artur. And there is one change to the agenda, and that is on page six, the regular agenda, item twenty-eight, transportation and traffic arguments, two thousand fourteen dash twenty-one. Staff is requesting this item be removed from the agenda. If there are no objections, we will surrender the item. Again, that's page six, item twenty-eight. All right, moving on then to item five, presentation of a proclamation to Chaplain Al Storey, Fellowship Square. Lois Bly, Arizona State Coordinator of National Day of Prayer, proclaiming Thursday, May first, two thousand fourteen to be National Day of Prayer, once pleasured for. Motion in a second to approve is more than objections. Hearing that motion carries, Supervisor Valadez, would you do the presentation?
Please. Yeah, this is the, well, this is one of the only proclamations I do all year, but I do it every year. So, let me go see if I've got a lot of, a little bit of practice on this proclamation. Whereas prayer is a vital part of our nation's rich heritage resulting from our founding forefathers, who turned to God in prayer as they sacrificially fought for many freedoms that are now freely enjoyed by all citizens of the United States. And whereas President Harry Truman formally recognized the importance of prayer and signing the law, Public Law three twenty-four, designating the observance of an annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas the United States Congress formally continued this tradition and passed Joint Resolution three eighty-two on April seventeenth, nineteen fifty-two, establishing an annual National Day of Prayer to join all citizens together as a nation acknowledging God in prayer each year. And whereas President Ronald Reagan permanently established the first Thursday of May to be National Day of Prayer when he signed Public Law one hundred dash three oh seven. And whereas we are especially mindful of the many heroic men and women serving in our armed services, especially those serving abroad. And whereas we join men, with fellow citizens of all religious faiths and beliefs from throughout our nation under this year's being, one voice united in prayer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors, in keeping with the longstanding and current honored tradition, here right proclaims Thursday, May first, two thousand fourteen, to be National Day of Prayer, and urges all citizens of Pima County to join with fellow citizens of all religious faiths and beliefs in prayer for God's richest blessings on our nation, state, county, and city, passed and adopted this fifteenth day of April, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you.
Can you guys say a few words?
Just that this National Day of Prayer, two thousand fourteen, is the most, we feel, the most important that there ever has been for our nation, for our state, and for our city. And I hope you find a location somewhere in the city. We've got twenty-two different sites, and it's still growing. So, go online to arizona, nationaldayofprayer.org, and find the location that you can go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the executive session of Supervisor Carol, proceed.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say I look forward to joining Mr. Valadez at Grace Temple for National Day of Prayer. To Reverend Grady Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Carol. We now are on item six, executive session. This is a call to the public for executive session items only. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address us on executive session items seven through nine? If not, I will move on to the executive sessions, items seven through nine. It's pleasure of the board.
Hold me a moment to executive session. Second.
Motion in a second to convene an executive session. There are no objections. This meeting is in recess until the sound of the...
No, but it's not... The reason, the reason.
It's silly.
The speakers were.
Down.
Two foot four.
Two.
But either way.
Thirty-five.
Try.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Yep. Yes.
I think, um, I can.
Do what, how are you?
How are you?
Stay with the folks back in the silver, walking away from their life.
Sure.
Put it on the schedule.
I took her off.
Sounds like her album.
Perfect, how's your work, huh?
I would...
There's something to say about it. How many do you go through to draw?
You ever figure out what you want to do on that pole? I talked to a guy, he said, "Well, I already did that," he says, "You never talk to him." He said, "You know, I'll tell him." You probably talked to your dad. Jerry's young, but that's his dad, but he works there. And I asked him, I said, "Do you need this pole for Greg or..." I talked to him, nothing about it. Yeah, that's his dad. He don't, he don't know much. Jerry says he never does, he only does it... I don't think he does, but he does it. No, I hear that too. What are you gonna do with this? What are you gonna do with that?
Oh, so... Gold figures? See, what I have is a big fortune. Clean trouble. You gotta wait.
We're reconvening the April fifteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. And this is tax day. You have how many more hours yet to get your returns in the mail? Okay, we have three executive session items, Counselor.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Executive Session Item Seven on the regular agenda is the first one we write in today. Concerns a claim against the city of Tucson for excess costs incurred by the county. And the city required the county to replace certain lateral water lines, apply road patches using incorrect technical specifications, all during the construction of the new public services center. County Attorney's Office seeks direction from the board regarding how to proceed in this matter at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's pleasure the board. Supervisor Carroll.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we follow the recommendation of the attorney in executive session on the item. And state in executive session.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Lance.
I'm not sure that that was an informed motion. What I would go ahead and move was that we move forward and offer an extension for ninety days of atonement that currently has with the city of Tucson.
And direct the county administrator to...
Continue negotiating with the law side during this period. See if we can help. A positive discussion.
Is there a second? Here's a motion and a second discussion. I would just note that in this matter, I would hope that moving forward in the future with any interaction with the city of Tucson, that we have IGAs in place and we have monitoring. It's unfortunate that this particular item has gotten this far. I think to prevent such possible action in the future, we need to be more diligent in our interaction with the city of Tucson when it comes to projects. And that means having IGAs in place that are... There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Are there any objections?
One.
One objection. Two objections, roll call.
Supervisor Carroll.
Difficult vote, I'm voting aye.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chair Bronson?
Aye, motion carries three to two. Moving on to item eight, Counselor.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Executive Session Item Eight on the regular agenda concerns a proposed settlement in the matter of HSL TI Building Properties LLC versus Pean County, Arizona Tax Court Case Number TX 2013-679. This case concerns the plaintiff's challenge to the valuation of real property improvements located at sixty-seven thirty South Tucson Boulevard, the former Texas Instrument Light Manufacturing Research and Office facility. The proposed settlement will reduce the full cash and the limited values of the subject property for tax years 2013 and 14, which values will not go over 2015. The legal classification and assessment ratio will remain the same. The recommended settlement will result in estimated tax decreases of eighty-six thousand four hundred thirty dollars seventy-two cents and eighty-four thousand two hundred fourteen dollars thirty-eight cents for tax years 2013 and 14, respectively. The figures do not take into account possible rounding. As part of the settlement, both parties agree to bear their own costs and attorney's fees and litigation expenses. Both the assessor and county attorney's office recommend this proposed settlement.
Supervisor Carroll.
County attorney's recommendation along with the assessor is discussing executive session on the item of HSL TI Building, Pean County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the county attorney and assessor's recommendation, discussion. Objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries four to one, Supervisor Miller voting aye. Moving on to item nine, Counselor.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Executive Session Item Nine on the regular agenda for the board's review and determination is a proposed settlement in the matter of DQ Vanderbilt LLC versus Pean County. This is Arizona Tax Court Case Number TX 2011-84. This tax deal concerns the plaintiff's challenge to the valuation of real property, both vacant, it's vacant subdivided land with minimal onsite improvements situated in the farm field five amended subdivision located in Lurana. There are approximately two hundred and eight subdivided single-family residential building lots in the subdivision affected by the proposed settlement recommendation. The proposed settlement will reduce the full cash value for each of the subject lots in the subdivision from eighteen thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars to thirteen thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars for tax year 2011. These values will not go over 2012. The legal classification and assessment ratios will remain the same. The estimated tax refund for 2011 shall be twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars eighty-seven cents and for 2012 will be twenty-six thousand ten dollars and five cents. For an estimated total tax refund credit at this settlement, fifty thousand nine hundred seventy dollars ninety-two cents. Again, these figures do not take into account the potential of rounding errors and the settlement includes an agreement that both sides bear their own costs and attorney's fees for this litigation. The proposed settlement is recommended by both the Pean County Assessor's Office and the county attorney's office.
Let's pleasure the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I am to accept the county attorney and county assessor's recommendations.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to accept the county attorney and assessor's recommendation on item nine. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. Flood Control District Board, item ten contract with three machines. Let's pleasure the board. Supervisor Carroll.
I do have to move under Flood Control District Board, item number ten. The contract was created in machines, aimed at artist services for the Pantano Wash Bank Protection River Park.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item ten, any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the Board of Supervisors sitting in regular session, the consent calendar.
Madam Chair.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on any items on the consent calendar? If not, Supervisor Carroll.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to remove one item through procurement, item eight, regarding your certificates of participation for the downtown courthouse. I'd like to vote on this separately as the chair.
Is that an informed motion?
That's item eight.
You'd like to move that?
I'd like to separate.
If there's any informed motion.
In the balance of the consent calendar, yes, and for the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to vote on item separately, any objections? All right, Supervisor Carroll, I'm here.
Madam Chair, when it comes to the downtown courthouse complex, we've talked about it many times. It's under the certificates of participation and I object to this continuing facility funding. So I'd like to move that. Item eight, I will not be voting for it.
Move deny.
To move deny the item.
Second. Motion and a second to deny, roll call.
Supervisor Carroll.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm engrossed in the paperwork and the background material, sorry about the dip. I'm a yes on no.
Supervisor Elias?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chair Bronson?
No. Motion fails by your own three to two. Is there an alternate motion?
We will rule aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item eight, roll call.
Supervisor Carroll? Supervisor Elias?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye, motion carries three to two. What is the board's pleasure with the remainder of the items on the consent calendar? Supervisor Carroll.
Madam Chair, for the information of the board members, their staffs, and anyone else, I'd have to take a conflict of interest for number one on the consent calendar due to a fifty-dollar item under finance risk management for Tuchet, which happens to be a member of our family's insurance.
Thank you very much.
Please. Please leave the room. You're leaving the room just for the record. With pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Lance.
I'll move item one on the consent calendar for April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Motion and a second to approve item one, are there objections? Hearing none, motion carries four to zero with Supervisor Carroll abstaining of the potential conflict of interest. Supervisor Carroll, we return.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
How about the remainder of consent if everyone else is okay and doesn't have any other items that they'd like to move on?
Second.
Motion and a second to remove the remaining consent calendar items. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item thirteen, Industrial Development Authority and Resolution Number 2014-43. Let's pleasure the board. What's pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move item thirteen, including Resolution 2014-43.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve item thirteen. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item fourteen on the development services, final plan of assurances. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carroll.
Maybe it's a district four item. I'd like to go ahead and move the final plot with assurances, item number fourteen for Delago Commerce Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve item fourteen. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're now in hearings. These are franchises license permits, items fifteen through eighteen. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on these items? If not, Supervisor Elias.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, noting the sheriff's report on items fifteen and sixteen in closed public hearing.
Motion in a second to approve items fifteen through eighteen in closed public hearing. Discussion? Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item nineteen procurement, appeal of procurement director's decision. Do we have this speaker on this?
Madam Chair, before we move into Mr. Rusin, you've come up here, but I wanted to ask a question before you get up here.
Supervisor Elias.
Because fundamentally, I just don't understand this, and I want George to resolve it before we really move into any more questions here. You know, how can you file an appeal when you never submitted a bid? How do you have standing? I don't understand that at all. So please explain that to me, George.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Elias, the fact that they had the business previously and the fact that they had numerous correspondence with our commodity contracts officer through the attempt at submitting a bid, we felt they were in fact an interested party. And so that's why we gave them the opportunity.
So any interested party, someone who writes you a letter, could file an appeal to one of your decisions? That's what you're telling me? That doesn't make sense to me, George. I mean, maybe our council wants to opine on this as well, because it seems to me there should be something in our ordinance regarding procurement that would define who has standing to file an appeal, because I just don't get it.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller. Well, let, let, yeah. Mr. Whitaker is.
Chris.
Yes, madam chair. Members of the board, I apologize that the code section here, the writing is very small, so I'm trying to get a good angle here so that you can read. This is under Pima County Code Section eleven point two zero and oh one oh protests, subsection J one. A protester or any interested party who participated in the protest hearing may file a written appeal and proclaim the director's decision specifying the reason for the appeal. Appeal should be filed with the clerk of the board within five days of the date of procurement director's decision. Two, the board supervisors shall consider the protest at regularly scheduled meeting and thirty days per procurement director's decision. The board may, with or without a hearing, either accept the decision from procurement director or determine an appropriate remedy.
Chris, what was that first part? Did you say anybody who participated in a protest hearing?
Yes.
That makes them an interested party?
It does.
What was the protest hearing?
Here's the, here's the rub with this. There was no formal hearing, and there usually is not.
I mean, I can see they met the date requirements, though within five days of George's issuing his decision, but there was no protest hearing, so how could you have standing?
Should there have been protester?
Yeah. You know, madam chair, members of the board, I'm willing to research this a little bit more. If you want more time to do that, it'd be great to do that. But here's the thing. I think at this point, the, I think the person who interprets and who applies this on a regular basis is the procurement director. You can either accept his recommendation or not. That's whether the party has standing or not. And then whether or not, if you assume that there is standing, then to fashion what is called an appropriate remedy. And those proper remedy at that point is whether you're going to allow the bid to be canceled or you're going to in fact grant relief to protester.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'd like to, I'd like for this hearing to continue today, because we've got people here, Mr. Rusin, and I suppose there's other people here from, from these companies involved. I don't mind hearing from them, but I, I need more information. I'm not willing to trust George's recommendation on this. I'm sorry. It just doesn't sound right. It doesn't meet the standard test. But I, I'd like to have a hearing and then continue it until our next meeting, so then we can make our decision. But that way, Chris has some time to research it, and then I, I don't feel like we're, we're out here in, I don't know, in the dark.
And if I understand that the recommendation is to uphold the procurement director's decision to cancel the current solicitation and direct staff to obtain the necessary information to accurately resolicit the requirements for the pump repair.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right. So it seems to me we've got two items. One, or two issues at hand. One is it was the protest timely and didn't meet the legal test for protest. Number two, apparently in the initial solicitation, the information wasn't necessarily accurate and the requirements were not what they needed to be. And so is that reason enough to cancel this solicitation and re, and rebid?
Right.
So those are the two. I think we're dealing with two separate issues.
Right, right. Because it was clear enough for somebody to submit a bid that was then accepted.
Well, the bid was accepted. I mean, there may be, it may have been based on the requirements of the bid, but it sounds like that staff in deriving those requirements didn't do enough homework, and we really do need to resolicit.
Right.
So those are the two issues I think we need to come to some determination regarding.
Right. I think your assessment is correct, and I'm fine with that, but I just don't think we can finish off the issue of standing today, because I think Chris needs to do something more.
But we, well, we could do to, yeah, I think probably, but we'll, we'll see how the main board members feel. But I think that the other issue is, do we want to cancel the current solicitation and direct staff to resolicit with additionally or with more firm or perhaps Mr. Huckleberry and Mr. Whitakers? What was the defect in the original solicitation that you now want to resolicit?
Thank you, madam chair. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, essentially what happened, we went out on the solicitation, and we're talking about, about what, ninety-seven different pumps and I forget how many different models, but there's a lot of submersible and above-ground pumps that are part of this pump repair solicitation. We did not pull together all of the accurate information from which respondents could accurately submit bids. The suppliers that typically respond to this, such as Bestway, Phoenix Pumps, LaRonde, they had been working with the pump manufacturer representatives, trying to identify the parts so that they could obtain pricing, so that they could put their bid together. I believe from the correspondence I read that companies such as Bestway Electric, they did have prior experience with Pima County, because they had previously held a contract, and they did a lot of research on their own to find information out from previous pump repairs they had done for the county. Their contention is that also Phoenix Pumps should have similarly been situated, because they've had the business for the last four years. Someone like LaRonde has not had the business, so they would have had to do their own research and try to figure out what it is we're looking for. The bottom line is, I don't think it was a fair solicitation, because we should have provided all of the information necessary to respond. It's a publicly advertised bid, so maybe there would have been a pump repair company out of Detroit that had no experience here locally at all, but we should have provided them with the information that they should have had to make sure that there was a level and fair playing field on this solicitation. So, you know, we made a mistake. We should have never let this bid close. We should have either attended it again with accurate information, or we should have canceled the solicitation before we had ever received the bid. So for that reason, I think it's most fair to go ahead and wipe the slate clean and resolicit with improved information. Now, I know on the surface it seems unfair to Bestway Electric that responded with their solicitation. It is public information, so yes, if other companies, other individuals came in and wanted to get that information, they could. But likewise, Phoenix Pumps, who's had the information, that information, or the business, their information has been public for some time too, and that was accessible, accessible to anyone who wanted to review that. So it's unfortunate. We apologize. It was bad on our part. What we need to do is try to correct this and move forward so that it's a fair and open and transparent process.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias and then Supervisor Carroll.
I'm really frustrated by this now, and I'm really frustrated by George's response to it, because this is a bid, last time it went out, there was another appeal, and it was messy, and it went on for months, and, and you know what? I would have expected George to take a little more care in making sure that this R and P went out correctly. So I'm, I'm just surprised at your answer. I appreciate your candor, and, and that's good. But all things said aside, I think it just shows some kind of bizarre behavior.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carroll.
Madam Chair, I'm usually ninety-five plus percent understanding of George's reasoning, and certainly have been supportive of his, him as procurement director, but I'm still a little in the, the mess here about the, how is this not going to be unfair to future bidders to expose the Bestway Electric? I think this is the one time I can see, and I think reality, that we're moving the goalposts. So unfair is, and I'm not connected to Bestway. I've never been to seven twenty-eights South Campbell, nor was I familiar with their work when they were the contractor or the supplier or vendor. But I will say on this one, I agree with Supervisor Elias that it's to rebid, seems to me, to expose all the opportunity that Bestway had in the process for their competitors taking advantage of them on behalf of them.
So essentially, your position Supervisor Carroll, if I understand it, does supervisor Elias, is do you think that by resoliciting, we put Bestway in a disadvantage?
That's why I...
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I agree with Supervisor Carroll and Supervisor Elias. I think this puts, penalizes Bestway for their experience in working with Pima County. And they were awarded the contract, and what I see here is going back to the drawing board and them coming out with information, they have experience with the county, and why should they be penalized for having that kind of background and knowledge on this contract? That's, I agree with Richard and Supervisor Elias and Supervisor Carroll on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Miller. Mr. Huckleberry, do you have any comments?
Madam Chair, my recommendation is simply to rebid, obviously. This is something that we provide the information, as you read the information, it's, I think it was twenty-seven different brands of pumps and ninety-nine models, both ground below ground. It's difficult to get all that information. They have that information now, and everyone would have it, but obviously it's choice of the board.
Thank you. Any further comments at this point?
No.
Good. Did you, I do not see that you filled out a green speaker's card, so after you speak, please identify yourself to the record, and then after your speak, if you would fill out a green card. Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Mick Rusin. I'm a lawyer with Water Rusin Oil Business, sorry, here on the best way of record. Just a few things I'd like to point out in regard to this bid is that the person, the entity that currently has the bid is Phoenix Pump, so they have more knowledge than anybody about what comes on, sheer numbers, horsepower, everything else. So if there was an undue claim to begin with in this process, they had, they had the loan, they had everything, they had a stake advantage. Now, the process begins, they don't even show up at the pre-bid meeting, and they don't submit a bid, which underlies the significance of if we rebid now based on a protest of someone who doesn't submit a bid, means that that person gets to look at bids of those who did without having submitted them. It's one thing if you submitted your own bid and everybody looks at their own bid. That's a whole different argument than yours, saying, leaning, reading, pushing, appearing like what they did here. And my view for the procurement code, at one step above this, gives our minds that a bidder or a broker may file a protest in writing with the procurement director. They were not...
We, we're not getting you on. You could get closer to a line. Thank you.
So in any event, the, I also have information here from one of the manufacturers that was providing the information for the bids, that these folks didn't even go back to them. Phoenix Pump didn't go back after they started having addendums to get information on the new pumps. They just backed out of the process. And I'll pass this around, it's something I just got yesterday from the person who provides the materials, James Cook and Hobson, for the Flight Pumps, which is one of the branded pumps, talking about that. But the way this process worked, there was like five or six addendums that my client got, and by the time we got to the sixth addendum, there was some deficiencies with information early on, and that's why they had addendums. And when the day was done, my client was able to put together a bid based on the knowledge they had, historic knowledge, internet research, the kind of stuff you do. All bids had an element of risk. They took it, and here, they're in a difficult situation, haven't submitted a bid, and if we rebid, it's not a plan. It can't be a level playing field, because they've seen what our client wants. And you should point out that the other bid was within five percent of ours. These bids were very close. If they decided not to bid, they should be stuck with that. And up until the complaint by the non-bitter, the county had no problem with it, and even after the complaint, and it's probably in the county's file, the procurement person responsible for this bid thought our bid was fine, deleted all this information, and this was after they had filed this complaint. It's an email from Hazel Houston I'd also like to pass out to the board further consideration.
And I just want to warn you, you have just a few seconds left, so if you can wrap up, but please make sure all of that information that you are providing, that you get to the court, so we can make it on, put it on record.
I will do that. I'll hand it to you.
And I took up some of your time, so proceed.
Well, I think the board has a very good handle on what happened and why it would be grossly unfair. My client, who did the work, who took the risk, submitted a bid, to have someone who didn't then come in with the benefit of looking at the other bids and submit one without any, as a branding process. And it, it'd be one thing if these bids were obviously out of whack with the process, but these bids were right in the five percent difference and should be awarded to my client, Bestway.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So if I understand the points that have just been made, the Bestway is put at a disadvantage within this rebid. Number two, that those who did respond were fairly substantially close, which indicates that the bid specs were probably okay. Not out of, what, that they were reasonably, that they were accurate enough so that people could, we could have done several bidders.
And also that's my interpretation of the procurement code, that they had no standing making a claim, that they just wait for the bid process.
Right. That's the second. Thank you. Okay. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor, I mean, consents.
If you don't mind, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Rusin.
Okay. Fine.
Mr. Rusin, thank you very much for taking some time here to answer some questions. Your view is that they don't qualify as an offer or bidder under subsection D of the code? When you talk about that, you're talking about Phoenix, Phoenix Pumps, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if, assuming... And assuming that they did, however, qualify as an offer or bidder, are you saying your client still has standing even though there is no formal hearing with respect to this?
Well, they have to, I mean, if they've been awarded, they have, they have to, they are, they are a bidder, so they have to...
They have standing.
They have standing.
Phoenix is the star.
Okay.
Well, I think the point the board is making, Counselor, is that they wonder why Phoenix Pump has any standing at all, since they appear to be the reason that they want, we want to cancel this solicitation.
Right.
And how do they have standing since they didn't bid?
Right.
So I think that's the issue.
Very good, thank you.
Phoenix Pump representative here today.
It was advertised.
Who's their lawyer, anybody that submitted this protest?
Do you have any further questions?
I don't with respect to that.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll move that we continue this item at first meeting in May.
We have a fairly full agenda at our first meeting in May.
Then do it the second meeting in May.
Or do you want to just award the contract? We could just award the contract and deny the...
All right, then I move to deny the appeal.
Well, no, we move to award the contract.
Oh, move to award the contract, I apologize, you're correct.
To Bestway.
Right, that's correct.
And deny the procurement director's recommendation.
That's what I meant to say, I apologize, yeah. And I'd like to ask the, make a motion to add direction to staff to clarify who has standing to those that have submitted bidders, submitted bids in the future.
Or clarify the whole protest.
Yes, I would like to add that, but I want to make sure that that comes from the county attorney's office as well as our staff working on that. Yeah, because there appears to be a misunderstanding between the two of them, Mr. Rusin.
And that's why I use the word staff.
Yes, okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, there's a motion in a second that's been amended slightly. Are there any further, is there any further discussion? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing on motion carries for one.
Four.
I mean, four is, five is...
Five, Chair.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
We're on a roll today. It's a full moon.
It's a full moon in the back, that this is tax day. My apologies. We're moving on now, we are, we completed item nineteen, and now we're moving on to item twenty. CO nine ninety-six zero nine forty properties, nighttime road rezoning. Items, let's do A and B, A is closure and B is time extension. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair. Supervisor Valdez and I are just now discussing which maybe district this really is in. And I think it's two, Mr. Porria. Would you please take a look, Eva?
It's right, it's nearly...
We're sensitive to protocol at this stage, so we'd like your help, Mr. Porria.
We just need to know that it is in District Four and not in District Two, yes?
Yes, Madam Chair, it'll take me but a moment. When the original rezoning came in, it was under District Four. But there have been a district change, obviously, since the...
Okay, then I go ahead and move to close the public hearing. Since there's nobody here representing forty properties, I think I'd know. To close the public hearing and move to recommend against closure an item twenty A.
Motion in a second to, to vote, to move against closure.
Right, in the second...
Well, let's just get a vote on that. Okay, and then close the public hearing.
And call the question on twenty eight.
Okay, so are there any objections to the recommendation against closure? Hearing on motion carries. The item isn't closed, so we go on to item B, the time extension.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, as well on this, I'd like to close the public hearing and recommend approval of a five-year time extension with modified additional standard and special conditions.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the time extension. Five-year time extension with modified and additional standard and special conditions as recommended by staff. Any objections? Hearing on motion carries. Moving on to item twenty-one, CO nine dash zero three dash thirty-one, Bacchus Old Spanish Trail rezoning again. Recommendation against closure and a time extension of five years. Supervisor Carol.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this one definitely is, not only District Four, it smacks right in the heart of the Vail area. And since I'm having a town hall in Vail this coming up in the month of April, I've asked the developer to attend, we're going to discuss this item, but they're planning zoning people at that town hall, so I'd like to move for a delay. I'd like to move that we delay item twenty-one A and B, leave the public hearing alone for the first meeting in May. May, after May sixth, how about May thirteenth?
To May thirteenth, continue until May thirteenth.
Both items, twenty-one A and B.
Second. Motion in a second to continue twenty-one A and B to the second meeting in May, which is on May thirteenth. Are there any objections? Hearing on motion carries. Moving on to item twenty-two, CO nine zero three thirty-two, Lee et al., Arch Grove Road rezoning again, A and B. Recommendation against closure and recommendation would be for a time extension of five years. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
I'd recommend close public hearing and recommend against closure of item twenty-two A, CO nine dash oh three dash thirty-two, B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second against closure, objections? Hearing on motion carries, moving on to item B, Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend approval of a five-year time extension with additional modified and additional standard inspectional conditions at the request of the Lee Family Trust.
Motion in a second, objections? Hearing on motion carries. Moving on to transportation, we have traffic ordinances, and they are twenty-three through twenty-seven. Item twenty-eight has been removed at the request of staff. Which, these are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items, twenty-three through twenty-seven at this time? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move items twenty-three through twenty-seven, including traffic ordinances, two thousand fourteen dash sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Close public hearings.
Second. Motion in a second to close public hearing and move through items twenty-three through twenty-seven. Objections? Hearing on, motion carries. Moving on to the addendum agenda, item one, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, would you please, Madam Chair, I would be grateful if I had an addendum on it.
Second.
Motion in a second under Facilities Management. Any objections to approval? Hearing on, motion carries. That brings us to the conclusion of this meeting, it's now time for call to the audience. Christopher Cole. Let me remind you, three minutes and your name to the record. But I think you probably already know.
Yeah. For those who knew the precincts or had forgotten, my name is Christopher Cole, I reside here in Tucson, Arizona. And since what I have to say, I cannot say in three minutes, I've divided each of you with a copy of the transcript. Basically, what I'm going to say is, women's wages is a very complex issue. And I don't think Pima County Board of Supervisors looked at both sides of that issue, and they were barely familiar with this last week. The commonly used statistic of seventy-seven cents on the dollar is a whole population median. In other words, to use an example, the Census Bureau compared the salary of starting quarterback of the Cincinnati Bengals with the cheerleader of the Cincinnati Bengals. When you do a study with scientific rigor, compare like to like, and adjust wherever possible to ensure that the study is fair and scientifically accurate, the discrepancy between women's wages and men's wages runs approximately five cents, plus or minus one cent. There are many reasons for this, including women tend to work fewer hours than men. Women tend to take more breaks in their career than men. Women tend to be junior to men. But the primary reason for the overall median discrepancy is that women, when they choose to, when they have the choice available, they choose to take careers that are at the bottom of the salary schedule. And the second reason, second primary reason, is that women are usually put in a position of poverty by being single mothers. There are ways around this, and just spouting off the seventy-seven cents to the dollar doesn't help. Pima County, you, the board supervisors last week said, we need to do a study, make sure that we're doing fair by our women. Well, unless you hire an expert, this is such a complex, a complex field, a complex issue, you're not going to get accurate data, you're not going to get data that'll give you a chance to make honest and reliable decisions. You need to hire an expert who has experience in this field. And obviously, I'm going to have to stop right now because my three minutes are up, but please, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Ms. Murphy?
Good morning, board. Mary Murphy from Green Valley. I've kind of been getting a little behind on some of the stuff I wanted to mention. The Canola Ranch project, is there a scale model in there somewhere that we could get into the library in Green Valley? There was a scale model for the Rosemont model, I need everybody to pay attention to it. The hospital going in in Green Valley, two questions. Will there be a level of trauma? Will there be reciprocity with Mexico? We will be treating foreign nationals. Minot to the equal pay thing. My ears is an administrator, an engineer, a construction supervisor, manager, project manager, program administrator, frontline supervisor. I never made what the men next to me were making. And as time goes on, I've heard the expression, payback is, fill in the blank. And this is it for your five hundred thousand dollar CMG engineering project in Green Valley. I think you should have phoned, but five hundred thousand, I think you could have phoned a woman to do it for three seventy-five, okay? I think you should have looked at that. I would like to say congratulations to Linda Ronstadt on her induction into the Hall of Fame. Do you remember when they started that, Towne Green Valley, Linda? You thought everybody over thirty should be put there? Well, come on down, because we've got some fun stuff going on. I heard the University of Illinois come up in the meeting that I missed when I was in court. They were in cahoots with Eller College here in Tucson for their airport study about planes coming in and out. I don't know exactly what part they play in it, but fifty years ago in Green Valley, they made a movie that was called Welcome to Tucson, Wish You Were Here, with twenty-seven minutes worth of live action in Green Valley. And I think we can still make that time. The University of Illinois, I get the magazine, it is, it is my alma mater, the School of Business and Business Administration, and I made some copies of, an article that I would have, I'm proud to put my name on, I'm proud to see my school's name put on it. And he has to do with who, who has a seat at your table when it comes to problem solving, decision making. Be wary of words like expert, if it is to the exclusion of other input. Who has a seat at your table? It's not just man, woman, black, white, whatever. Organization, I will quote the author, organizations need to allow for dissent. They need to embrace that as part of their culture, and realize that dissent is part of the value of bringing people together to solve problems. This is wonderful. And I've got some other handouts that I forgot to leave with the last item about corporations, and the Sarita Green Valley Marijuana Dispensary is already upgrading their product line. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Johnson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brian Johnson, and I'm a member of Pima County SCIU Local Forty-Eight. I'm a county employee, and like most county employees, I am committed to providing excellent service to the taxpayers. Over the last few weeks, we have shared with you stories and statistics about Pima County employees working to provide these quality services and to provide for their families as well. And I'd like to continue that talk today. Pima County's lower wage earners are still unable to afford necessities with their low incomes. From two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen, the cost of living in Arizona rose six point five percent. In that time, fuel and utilities have increased three point seven percent. Apparel costs nineteen point eight percent. Transportation, six point one percent. Housing, seven point eight percent. Medical care, four point seven percent. And food costs have risen six point nine percent. Public employees have even fallen behind the private sector in terms of pay, keeping up with the cost of living. From two thousand ten to two thousand twelve, Arizona private sector employees saw their pay increases an average of five point five percent. Last month, the county approved another insurance increase for employees. That five percent increase on insurance premiums for employees is going to hit the lowest earners the most. And as I stated then at the hearing, it's counterproductive even to your efforts for the wellness program in your insurance. And for some with the larger salaries, that may, they may barely notice it, but for those who are earning the least, those few hundred extra dollars will have a real impact on their ability to provide for their families. We understand there are difficult decisions to make in every budget year, and the recession hit everyone hard, and we know that some sectors of the economy, like housing and retail, are recovering very well. But we have, employee compensation has not been addressed in a real way. We believe it's time to take a step in the right direction. The bottom line is, if salaries do not keep up with the cost of living and the added expenses of increased health insurance, we're asking employees to take a pay cut. Those earning the least simply cannot afford to do this, we're asking you to make a commitment to them, the lowest wage earners especially. Thank you.
Thank you. John, Vessera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. My name is John Vessera. I am a...
I always have problems with where it could be happening.
I could have said Vessera. Vessera's right.
No, I said Vessera. Because I, I always accent the first syllable, it's just...
Okay.
It's my, it's my French language.
Okay. My name is John Vessera, I'm the chapter chairperson at SCIU Pima County, chapter local forty-eight. I am a county employee, and as I have told a few of you many times, I love my job and with the county. Like you to know, last year I received a modest raise, but I'm sure administrators and directors saw a greater raise than I or more, most of the employees saw. What we ask is, the employees of the lower end of the pay scale do not see higher wage earners pay go up drastically, while theirs is small, and they're not, they're still not able to afford some of the necessities that they... still not able to, uh, afford some of the necessities that they need. As with the five percent increase in health insurance, which is the cost, which costs the lowest wage earners, the same as it costs the highest wage earners, would like to see pay raises be as equitable as rate hikes. And thank you for your time, and I love you, Bob.
Are there any further individuals who would like to address us at this hearing or at this meeting? If not, then without objection, this meeting stands adjourned.
I hear you, ma'am. I hear what you're saying. So that's in part why we ask for this, right?
But I've never seen a guy that tells me something, or whatever. I think we have enough to make it this way. I think we have enough, because I would not.
Yeah, I tell you, if you have a job or something, we do have a responsibility typically in Mexico for all our hospitals. Like, it's pretty normal that we do this, though, without the fire districts in the eastern part. What's your thought?
Um, the question of trauma, which is, but it's something, you know, the number three is a keynote, and the number four is a... So, and there's not two, there's just... See? Easy.